Well, Seth? If we could all rise for the pledge this morning, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, on nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if I can just read a statement before we get into business, we've done this before, some of you may have heard this. But we, the board, request that all audience members be respectful to others by not whispering or having conversations during the meeting, so that those in attendance can hear what is being discussed by the board and other participants. Sound travels easily in this room, and it's, Colleen has a hard time at times hearing things, and she's responsible for taking the minutes. We will open by, let's see, we have minutes of our May fifteenth meeting. Do I have a motion to accept those minutes?
I'll make the motion to accept those minutes.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No opposition? Could you pass that down to Travis, please? Thank you. And then we have minutes of our board meeting held on May twenty eighth. Could I have a motion to accept those minutes?
Make the motion.
And, um, you want a second, Sharon?
Sure.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
No opposition? All right. Okay, thank you. Uh, then we have minutes of our select, uh, non-public selectmen's meeting, um, held on May twenty eighth. Could I have a motion to accept those?
Still moved. Second?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
No opposition? Okay, Alicia, our first order of business, obviously, is wastewater assessment management plan, and this is kind of a wrap-up session, correct?
Correct.
All right, and you are?
My name is Margaret Lang with Underwood Engineers.
Okay.
And I'm Sarah Reddard with New Hampshire D E S, and we provided the funding on this project.
All right.
Uh, D E S provided a thirty thousand dollar grant to prepare this asset management program.
Okay, all right.
With a wastewater system.
All right, and?
All right, so the goals of the asset management program are to understand the condition of your wastewater infrastructure, identify and correct deficiencies, anticipate future needs, provide a basis to estimate financial resources that you're gonna need to rehabilitate and replace assets as needed, and continue to build on the asset management program. This is just the beginning. As you know, maintaining the sewer system is an ongoing battle at the water system. So the components of the asset management program are the vision statement, the level of service, asset inventory and condition assessment, criticality, which is a way to prioritize your assets, minimum life cycle costs, long-term funding strategy, the implementation plan, and the communication plan. So the vision statement we came up with at the level of service workshop was to improve record-keeping efforts to manage the wastewater selection system and simplify the sharing of information with stakeholders more effectively. So I've mentioned the phrase "level of service" a couple of times, and you might be wondering what I mean. D E S defines this as a set of SMART goals used to balance the service provided with cost. And SMART is an acronym that means specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, and time-based. We held a level of service workshop about this time last year, June sixth. The stakeholders that we decided on were your larger customers, there's three schools in the service area, a hospital, I'm looking at Brian to see if that's correct.
Clinic, I guess.
A clinic, okay, a medical facility. And you do have some commercial properties in the service area, too, and one that was mentioned in particular at that time was All Metals Industrial Inc., which produces domestic wastewater only. And of course, the town of Belmont elected officials.
We produce a lot of waste.
Can I move you up the list?
Really?
I just wanna know when you're gonna dig up two tile road and put it in.
All right, so a couple of the goals that were determined at that level of service workshop were public communication and outreach, updating the town website to embed a story map, which I'll explain later. It's an electronic kind of PowerPoint presentation that includes interactive elements like maps and dashboards that people can look at but not edit. Or a PDF version of the story map was mentioned as well, I think the thought was that's easier to include in the website. And of course, continue to encourage attendance at public meetings. Under the operation and maintenance category, we had inspect ten percent of wastewater structures each year. We've already set up an electronic form that I think staff has been using. I think we're gonna fine-tune that right after this meeting. Also continuing to clean and CCTV gravity mains. CCTV meaning a camera inspection, just to make sure the gravity mains are in good condition.
We're already doing that, aren't we?
Routine pump station visits. And another thing that was mentioned as a possibility was a SCADA upgrade to save weekend overtime. So just some background about your system. Belmont is one of ten communities served by the Winnebago Saki River Basin Program, which is a state-owned sewer system that serves about ten communities in the Lake area. Belmont, of course, has its own system where it collects wastewater and transmits it to the WRVP system. It's a good-sized system, approximately ninety-seven thousand linear feet of gravity mains, five hundred and thirteen sewer structures, and eight thousand linear feet of forced main. And I should've added here that you own seven pumping stations. Your system age of your horizontal assets in particular, most of it was built in nineteen eighties, so in terms of horizontal wastewater structure, it's not that old. But I know that identifying and correcting INI is a priority because of your connection to WRVP. About seventy-two thousand feet of your pipe of the ninety-seven or ninety-seven thousand or so which you own was installed during the nineteen eighties. Three hundred and sixty-two manholes of the five hundred and thirteen were also installed in the nineteen eighties. The town has done quite a bit of condition assessment work. I know that Underwood completed an INI study in twenty twenty-one, which built on an effort that was completed, I think, in two thousand and eleven. At that time, five collection basins showed excessive INI. Those basins, and I don't know if this'll mean anything to you, but those basins were A1, J, O1, P6, and P7. There's a map I included, and I don't know how clear it is, but there should be five little areas on that map that look a little bit darker.
So basically over near the lake?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yes.
Yep.
Most of them are over near the lake, and then there's one kind of to the east, kind of near the Shaker Road pump station area, but the rest are right, right on the lake. All right, your wastewater pumping stations, I believe most of these were installed in the eighties and then completely redone in two thousand and twelve, or mostly redone in two thousand and twelve. I can list all of those, but I think that you're already familiar with them. The Shaker Road pump station has, you know, still has some original structures from nineteen eighty-four. I think the wet well and, and a valve vault are still original, but those are very long-lived assets, they're concrete, they'll be there a long time. So the next step in this effort is to somehow prioritize your assets. So to do that, we assign two scores on a scale of one to five. One is the probability of failure. And what goes into assigning that score is the condition primarily. If we don't have condition information, we use the age, because condition is usually correlated with age. And the capacity or performance, I mean, you might have an asset that's in, not that old, in good condition, but it's undersized, and it's not doing the job it needs to do. The other element is the impact of failure. What happens if this asset fails? How many people will it affect? What will the consequences be? So if there's a potential for public health and safety impact, we give that a high score of five. If it, if it affects a large number of customers or a very important customer, that would be a five. If it's just a few customers and the impact on them would be low, the score would be a one. And I'm kind of going through the scoring system on the next slide. But the probability of failure, we set that equal to the condition score if it's a four or five, meaning it's in poor or very poor condition. Otherwise, it's based on remaining useful life. The risk score is the probability of failure times the impact of failure, and the risk score is what we use to rank the assets. So an asset with a five probability of failure, meaning very high, and a five impact, also meaning very high, that would, you know, those guys would rank first on the list, and then it continues on down. We plotted all your assets on the criticality chart. It's that square chart that says priority renewal, highest risk, frequent monitoring, limited monitoring. I kind of showed a blank version of the chart so you can read it, because the next version has, has a bunch of dots populated on it. And you really don't have much in the highest risk category. I think there was one manhole in poor condition, which I believe has already been repaired, so that one will, will probably wind up falling out. And then there are some shorter-lived assets at the pumping stations, some of the electrical components, things like that. I think there's, there are three things in that highest risk.
So those are, those are pretty much things that don't have the same lifespan of other components within that pump station?
Exactly. Like, I think you guys have some fuel tanks for the generators and possibly the unit heaters, and those last maybe twenty years. But then, you know, compare that to a precast wet well, or manhole that's gonna last estimated seventy-five years. So I kind of just did a summary of the things that are, you know, highest risk or priority renewal, things that need to be addressed, and like I said, there was that one manhole in poor condition, intake and discharge levers at Coon's Point haven't exceeded their estimated useful lives, according to my information, and so on. But you can see, it's, it's almost all things at the pumping stations, just because they have shorter useful lives than your typical manhole or, or a gravity main. So I went ahead and did a replacement cost estimate in twenty twenty-four dollars of your whole entire sewer system, and I came up with a number of eighty-five billion dollars. So you have a big investment buried in the ground. And I just like to share that number, because sometimes it doesn't really show up anywhere. Like, if you look at your balance sheet, a lot of your assets are depreciated, so you're looking at this depreciated value. Your system isn't that old, so there probably is still some residual value there. But some systems are quite old that it, they just sort of fall off the balance sheet, so. And I also made a pie chart that goes with that table. Your, your big, the biggest chunk of this is the wastewater pipe, your gravity mains. I think you have something like, well, ninety-seven thousand linear feet. It's around nineteen miles, I believe. So that's the big, the big chunk of it, and it is for most wastewater systems. All right, so I took that highest risk and priority renewal table, and I put some dollar amounts to it. So in the next ten years, about one point six million dollars worth of assets are coming due for replacement. Highest risk, thirty-five thousand, and priority renewal, one point six million or so, one point five seven million. So part of this asset management program, I do something I call a ten-year look-ahead. And why do I call it that? Because it forms the basis for identifying when existing assets may need attention. The point is to surface assets that are exceeding their estimated useful lives or might be in poor condition, that you might not think about. When something is buried, you don't see it, you don't know. It doesn't anticipate expansions or upgrades due to growth or process changes. So this is meant to be kind of folded into your capital management program. So most places, if they have an old gravity main somewhere, they're not just gonna replace the gravity main, they're gonna fix the road and the water main and the sewer drainage, or not sewer drainage, storm drains while they're at it, at it. You know, they, they kind of look to group projects together. Like I said, about one point six million in estimated replacement costs for the next ten years. So the assumptions used in putting these costs together, assume that, we're assuming full replacement costs, and they're all in twenty twenty-four dollars. It's based on the estimated end of useful life. I used to say that actual cost is likely to come in lower. Costs have been a little crazy lately, and we've done our best to update our costs by looking at recent bid tabs and trying to find reference projects. The good news is that we, we don't expect every asset that is near the end of its useful life to have to be replaced. A lot of them will still be in serviceable condition, or another rehabilitation technology might suffice. You might be able to line a gravity main, for example, and not need to replace it.
That's a wounded word around here right now.
I also did a one hundred-year look-ahead, that might sound a little crazy, but a lot of these assets are very long-lived, and in some communities, like, the, the first ten years looks great. Like, yours does in comparison to some of these future years. One point six million, not terrible. Some communities have a big spike in that next decade, that twenty thirty-four to twenty forty-three decade. So it's, it's just good to keep that in mind. In your case, since most of your assets were installed in the eighties and have an estimated useful life of about seventy-five years, most of them are not going to be at the end of their useful life for a few decades. So that's the good news. But, you know, as staff, and staff is, you know, steadily inspecting things so that things are gonna be repaired along the way, and hopefully won't get to the point of age. And that'll actually save you money in the long run. All right, so financial planning, just kind of hitting the highlights, and some of this came from our, from the level of service workshop, too. So one of the things that came up was ensure staffing is sufficient to complete monitoring, maintenance, and AMP update tasks. I think when we had the level of service workshop a year ago, finding staff was a challenge. And I don't know if that's continuing or not.
I think we're fully staffed.
It's better.
It's better, right.
Good. Brought that one on the list.
I mean, it's good that Margaret is like, I mean, I see you guys kind of like listening to the figures of how many pump stations we have, and how many lines, and how many, you know, there's a lot to it. We basically have one guy who is dedicated to that position. So this is why we're cross-training guys and stuff like that, trying to do that. But, I mean, it's a huge responsibility to maintain all this, and asset management is a huge part of being able to keep your system updated and in control, you know?
This, this stuff with Margaret and her team have set us up with, allowed us to go well with our electronic devices, my iPhone, the Forman iPhone, enter this stuff as we go, and then it's done. It's in the computer, we have it, we own that information, we don't have to go back and get it again. And this, this just makes it easier if we change staff. That stuff will just get passed down.
It's not gonna get lost, we shuffle things down the road with some of you guys here. It's just...
I think the only...
...how many things we found on napkins and...
Oh, no, sure, but it's, it's true. I mean, people took Melles, but it just, it wasn't organized.
I think, I think the, the thing we lack at this point, and maybe I'm wrong, is we still have to have guys on the, on the weekend check every pump station. And isn't that, and I can't find it now, you talked about the upgrade of the...
SCADA's.
What is it?
SCADA's.
SCADA's system, right. And that's really something that we probably have to really look at.
It's a huge investment.
It is a huge investment, yeah.
And SCADA is good, but, you know, there's nothing like boots on the ground. Because when you go into a pump station, you, you know, you use your senses. You know, you, you use your sight, or, and you use, you know, your sense of smell, electrical problems, or something like that. So even though, even though SCADA is a valuable, valuable asset, I still think that there's some value in physically going and looking at these stations every weekend.
So you, you wouldn't feel comfortable by not looking at them every weekend, is what you're saying?
Well, you, you could divide it up.
Sure.
You probably wouldn't have to do it every weekend, but...
Spot checking.
My personal would be like, if I'm driving by one, I'm gonna check it anyway.
Yep.
You know what I'm saying? So it's just...
All right.
Just one thing to add to, and I don't wanna slow you down, but like, I mean, the asset management program is wonderful, and their recommendations are wonderful, but unless you get the support of the people to finance these things, like, for instance, I don't know if you guys remember five or six years ago, we wanted to upgrade the generator at the Shaker Road pump station?
Right.
Because it's nineteen eighty-four.
Right.
And we wanted to do some electrical upgrades.
Wasn't that on the ballot?
It was on the ballot.
And it got defeated, didn't pass.
And we had the money.
Sure.
So it's still, we still need positive, you know, reinforcement from the public and the voting public to get this stuff passed. I have the money to do stuff, and the public still doesn't want you to do it. It's, you know, it's, it's a discouraging process when you put all this work into something, and someone just votes no. You know, it's just, so you, just, just a little background.
Well, I, I think it's, you know, usually I find the elected officials get it, they're on board, and sometimes it's persuading the public, and hopefully this can help with that. But I think it's just important to remind people, like, that old nineteen eighty-four generator, it has maybe a forty-year lifespan, it's not gonna last forever.
Well, and I think we've had a lot of maintenance problems with it, and the problem is, all that money we've spent to maintain that thing, when we have the money sitting in an account to replace it, but the voters vote no. And again, we're up against the fact that obviously the far more majority of voters are not on any system, water or sewer, so they're gonna vote no, 'cause they just think it's their tax dollars.
They don't think it benefits them.
Right, right.
And we have put significant amount of money to that generator. And, and that's, and just that, that, just that cost itself, you gotta look at the, you gotta look at the cost. If that, if that system breaks down, we don't, we run out of power, okay? And the, and the generator for some reason.
Doesn't start.
I mean, we test them every, every month, or we run them, we do a run test, but if something happens, and we have to get a pump truck in there to physically, you know, say you've got a pump truck for a week or two, that, you could've replaced that generator for the cost of that pump truck.
Right, emergencies are expensive.
They are.
So you wanna avoid them. And, you know, it's like, so let's say you can handle that emergency, but you still don't replace the generator. You're gonna do it all over again. You're, eventually you're just throwing money into a hole.
I think we've already done that with that particular generator, unfortunately.
Yeah. And, you know, I can, I can see, I'm preaching to the converted.
I understand, yeah. Obviously, so that everyone understands, this is our system, the town of Belmont's system. And obviously, we're faced with one forty that the state owns. The state owns that, but because we're the only town that's being serviced, or pretty much the only town being serviced by it, that's what we're getting told, that we have no choice, that we've come back and asked for the state to look at sliplining. Only a portion that is, seems to be where it keeps leaking, but they want the whole thing replaced, and we have to foot the bill. but they want the whole thing replaced, and we have to foot the bill. So, we're waiting for the great news of where are they finding the money, because we don't have the money.
Oh, so...
Don't even begin to have the money.
So, the town is having to replace a portion of the WRPTs?
Oh, wait, we replace the whole thing.
Oh, wow.
Because they will not allow us to replace a portion. It's all or nothing. Well, it's gonna be all because it keeps leaking. So, and we've asked for sliplining, we've asked for other things, but they've said no, that it's their way. So, we're waiting to hear what their way, because...
Nine million dollar price type stuff online that come on, um, or it passes ninety-eight percent, but ninety-six percent.
Yeah.
Northfield.
Yeah. So, that's a, um...
That's a big hit.
Yeah, that, we don't have the money. And, and the customers, um, it's not a big enough customer base. Um, they're gonna get hit bad, because obviously, if it goes on the ballot, they, well, we have no choice. If we get the bill, we gotta pay the bill.
And if the wastewater doesn't have the money, then it comes out of the general fund, I assume.
Well, how do you...
There, so we've encouraged them to find money, um, through grants or whatever, because, um, it's just gonna be a huge hit for taxpayers. And it's, you know, it's nothing, us as a board, it's something that was signed, I think probably back in the eighties, when it was installed. This is something that was...
They put a steel line right through a swamp. They knew it then. They knew it was wrong, and they did it anyway. And now, the years and the traffic control on one forty, you can stand there, it's like, the road's like a bowl full of jelly. It's been sitting, just pounding these big trucks use that road, the east-west highway. Where it yet has along the lake, they put it all in a cement box, up by the railroad tracks. So, they don't have that problem. But we were blessed with that problem. And that was a state...
And basically, that line goes through our aquifer.
Yep.
Goes through our aquifer.
Oh, boy.
But, if, they claim it's our line because it's only servicing, well, ninety-eight or ninety, what it, percent of it.
Northfield gets a little benefit.
Yeah.
Well, don't be alone, John. Because every other community is dealing with the same situation with the same type, the same certain section.
Yeah, yeah.
We're not, we're not, we're not...
We're not alone. It's just, it just, us is a pretty long run.
It is.
And, um, yeah, so it's, yeah, it's a real problem. And it goes to that South Road pump station.
Oh, right, okay. Yeah, I actually moved up here from Florida, and we were always installing pipe in swamp areas because half the state is a swamp, or was a swamp.
Yeah.
But, um, yeah, it's, um, you have to be careful, definitely, about how you install pipes in areas like this.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah. This is great. I mean, I, I, I do know a couple of things the guys have already, um, kind of addressed, which is nice. And, um, and obviously, it's great to see that, uh, you know, the, um, um, what was it? The ten-year plan, you know, isn't, isn't, well, we know we have this other problem, but our system, I'm not gonna say that's ours, even though the state says it is, our system really is, is in pretty good shape, that's for sure.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I know you've been doing I and I work, I think, since two thousand eleven. Um, another study in twenty twenty-one, so you've been keeping on top of things.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, the, the system's not that old. You've been keeping on top of things. I mean, you upgraded nearly every pumping station in your system in twenty twelve, so you're, you're doing your part, for sure.
Yeah. Awesome. Good. Any, any questions from anyone? No? No questions? No? That was great. So, this is, this goes into our file for capital, correct?
Yeah, we definitely wanted to start making a plan. Obviously, this is what this is for, based, you know, to base it off of their suggestions for this asset management program and, you know, kinda look at where you guys wanna, how much you wanna tuck away, even just starting with the ten years and, and going on. I know we also have significant increases coming from the WRPT that we also have to increase our budget, um, in the next year or two, um, because they're doing the same thing. They're replacing assets that are, and we have no choice to pay that bill either, so, here, too.
Yeah. Yes, Greg.
Wanted to thank Margaret again, and, and Margaret's gonna be working on, um, I, I said Underwood and Margaret are working on a lead line inventory service that is coming up. And basically, that's, that's gonna be a huge project, too. And we thank Underwood and the state for the funding.
I was gonna say, that, that's a grant-funded, too, isn't it?
Yeah, we're kinda like, I think, I think Margaret had said, we're kinda like pilot program for that.
Yeah.
So, which is, which is, I think it's great.
Great, yeah.
So, we'll, you know, that, that's gonna be part of getting our, our, our inventory, you know, electronically, um, calculated and...
Up to date.
Up to date. And, um, yes, we're looking forward to that, too, so...
Right, and, and we were talking about submitting another application to update your water asset management program, because that was done maybe ten years ago in AutoCAD and Excel. So, if we could just bring that up to date, put it in this, include your service lines.
Include the lead line service, with the service inventory, so when we can develop, we can, we can bring a laptop, we can, you know, punch in the address, and we can find where the curves off is, what they actually have for a line, whether it's a house, or type of meter they have, what type of, you know. I wish I would have known this back when we did the meter, meter upgrade program, because when we were into these houses, we could've...
Oh, put all that information down.
Work, but, you know, who, who would've thought? So, but, thanks again to that, too.
Awesome. Awesome.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to everybody. Great work by the town staff, Margaret, on this. You know, I've been reviewing a lot of his reports lately. I think it stands out that Thelma's doing a good job maintaining the infrastructure and is really engaged in it. And I'll just mention, too, that we do offer, um, funding for our Clean Water SRF programs, State Revolving Fund. Um, and now that you have completed your asset management program, and you do choose to apply for future projects, you've identified them through this, you do get extra points on your pre-application, which, you know, is a big investment.
Put this up, sure, sure.
Yes, it's a competitive program, so just keep that in mind, and, you know, just great job on the, on the program.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate coming, you coming. Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have, the next item is, what is it? COSAP Grant Extension Request.
COSAP.
COSAP?
COSAP Grants.
COSAP.
Um, so, Lieutenant Evan Lander had reached out to me, um, with the ask, and you have a letter here from him asking you guys for permission to extend the, they call it the PET officer position.
Yeah.
Richie Ryan is currently the officer who does that program. And it was a COSAP grant, which I just learned they changed it to COSSAP. They didn't like the word. Um, they didn't like the word abuse. Now it's use.
Oh, okay.
So, it's a COSAP program. Um, so I have to change that and everything we have. Um, so, this is just a time request. So, the grant extension, the grant period ended, it ends in September of twenty-four. They have applied for the extension of that grant. This is just a, a time extension of one year, so this would end in September of twenty twenty-five. I had asked, um, Evan if this will also include the financial aspect of it. At this point, it is not. It's just the time, but they are applying, from what I understand, to get more grant funding from that. Um, I believe when I had spoken to Chief, that from basically October to January, they would fund, if it doesn't get funded, they would fund it through, um, part-time. That, there is obviously the risk that we don't get the funding for the program. Do you want to be more insight on how you guys are going to approach if you don't get the funding? I mean, is he aware that he could be let go if there's no funding?
Yeah, I mean, when this, when this grant initially came out.
He knew he had a timeline.
It will be sad if it doesn't get, get renewed, because I know he's been working really closely with Donna on a lot of not fun stuff. And he's, from what I understand, has done a phenomenal job with what he's doing and helping Donna along the way also. Um, so, I hope, I, I hope it gets funded, because it's been, um...
And a lot of the, a lot of the, uh, other agencies that are participating or have participated aren't really able to do a lot. So, Richie's actually, you know, one of the few that is actually doing a lot with this, with this grant, so we're very fortunate.
Yeah. Well, hopefully, I assume that he probably has numbers and information and everything that goes along with this application or trying to get it extended. Awesome. Alright.
So, the motion in your pocket is just the time extension, and once we receive word, if the financial side is awarded, then we can revisit it then?
I'll make a motion to approve the time extension for the Comprehensive Opioid Stimulus and Substance Abuse Site-Based Program, known as COSAP. Subgrant time extension from September thirty twenty-four to September thirty twenty-five.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
All opposed.
All opposed?
I remember we're...
Oh, yeah, all opposed. I gotta, I gotta say, all opposed, so remind me. Anybody opposed? Yeah, alright. Um, so that, that motion carries.
Anyone have any questions for me or Tompkins?
We're all pretty aware of what's going on with that. Okay, sale of municipal property, fire department miscellaneous items.
Yes, we have received, um, a check, and I provided you guys with a breakdown of all the items the Fire Department had brought to the auction. So, they have eleven items for a total of four thousand five hundred and four dollars and fifty cents. We have received that check. So, if you would like to make a motion to accept that.
So, these are just items that were, because we replace hoses, right?
We do, and these are hoses that technically don't pass, so farmers could use them.
Oh, sure.
You don't wanna use them for, for suppression or life safety. But these can be used by, you know, the water department and stuff like that, on places.
Irrigation?
Yeah.
That kind of thing, sure.
Depending on the situation, but, yeah, they were just taking up space and, um, kinda trying to clean out some stuff.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Got rid of that truck bed finally since two thousand seventeen. So, that was in there.
Good, good.
The old forestry.
Alright. An old jaws-of-life equipment.
Twelve. Oh, there was, yeah, there's some, we've got all battery-operated, those are all expired, that, those are all older equip, um, pieces of equipment. Everything we have now is battery-operated. Um, and that again...
Sets around.
Something to park, yeah, it sets around and collects dust, so why not put it to a small department or, um, some garage is using, whatever they do that.
Tearing a place with two, no, there you go. Good. Awesome. So, we need a motion for that, please.
I'll make the motion to accept a check in the amount of four thousand five hundred, four dollars fifty cents from JS, JSJ Auctions for the sale of a municipal property. Funds to be deposited into the general fund.
I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone oppose? Okay, awesome. Thank you. Old Home Day Donation Acceptance.
So, we have had quite a few people come here.
I, I didn't even see you.
Quite a few people stuff up to sponsor. Um, this is probably the last big one, and then we'll have a couple more for next month. But we did have a thirteen hundred dollar donation. It says it's from Verco Belnap. It's really the Belnap Marketplace.
Oh, the mall?
Yep, the mall.
Okay.
Yes, it's the mall owners, and they own thirteen hundred dollars. And they wanted it dedicated to attractions. It was both specifically about, like, a cutting zoo. I'm trying very hard to get a cutting zoo. I don't know if that's gonna happen, but we will be sure that it's attractions or something. It says just...
And no, don't get any ideas. I knew exactly what you, I saw the look.
I will say, the year we had the cutting zoo, it was very much like a huge hit. So, we were trying to...
We have a cutting zoo. It's through South Road.
No, it's... Yeah.
Anything to help? Nothing in particular, anything for the event.
Awesome. Alright. Would someone like to make that motion?
I'll make the motion to accept donation, amount of one thousand three hundred dollars from Verco Belnap LLC, AKA Belnap Marketplace, for the purpose of funding Old Home Day Attractions Family Activities per RSA thirty-one, colon ninety-five, hyphen E, colon II, II.
I will second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone oppose? Okay. Opioid Abatement Fund Acceptance.
Yes, we had another distribution from the Opioid Litigation Settlement Fund, um, that we've been getting on a yearly basis. So, this is just our, I believe this is our first distribution for twenty-four. That was just, um, a motion in your pocket to accept that, and that was an amount of twenty-four thousand one hundred nine...
And where does that money go?
So, there is six or eleven, I don't remember the RSA, but how, how many allowable uses are for the RSA. But, um, I encourage, um, Donna can use it, our...
Fire Department.
Journal Assistant Welfare Office can use it to, um, provide transportation to rehab. Um, fire and police can use it to get Narcan and the other, um, let's just say Narcan. Uh, we can use it for training for, um, opioid and substance abuse, um, for police and fire. Um, we, police did use a big chunk of that when they got the, uh, shrunar tester to test the drugs, and they do a traffic stop, um, so that they don't have to risk being, um, exposed to that. Was a, one of a, a good...
Yeah, the RSA basically allows them to do anything to deal with opiate addiction, and they just didn't want the towns to put it back in their general fund. That's the only reason they put an RSA to it.
And I guess here's, here's my question, is that if we don't get the funding for, um, Richie, can some of those monies go for that? Because that's what he's doing. He's strictly...
I had thought about the other day, too, to look at all the RSAs to see if we could use it for...
Yeah, if, if, if our funding doesn't come through, that would help to carry him through if need be.
It's a good service.
And I think we also, we usually get more than one, so hopefully we'll get a couple. I think, didn't last year we got more than one?
Um, so this one, I think, is accumulation of a bunch of little ones that they just gave us in one check.
Okay, alright, maybe so.
They did tell me what I was to expect. Um, so I think this might be the only distribution this year, but...
But I think it would be worth, it's not, doesn't cost anything to ask, just in case we, um, end up short in that.
Yeah, and it would, you know, they've got a lot of new staff, too, so maybe they can send some staff to training this year, same with fire, and they might be able to, um, utilize it for training, the Narcan reversements. Um, and Donna, she's certainly one who could use it as well.
For our police and fire, real quick, do we pump through Narcan here, or do, is it not as bad as, like, Laconia goes through Narcan?
We don't do it as much as the fire department uses it, but we at least have a Narcan thing.
Kinda like, Laconia goes through a lot of it, unfortunately.
We're up there for a small town.
Yeah.
Percentage-wise, we are probably equal to Laconia.
Shit.
For capital, is that there?
Yeah, that's scary. Thank you.
Alright. Could I have a motion to accept those funds, please?
I'll make the motion to accept in accordance with RSA thirty-one, colon ninety-five, twenty-four thousand, one hundred and nine thousand thirty cents from the Opioid Litigation Settlement Fund for distribution, to be used in accordance with RSA one twenty-six, dash, A eighty-six. I'll second that.
Alright. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone oppose? We never oppose money.
No.
Never, ever. Okay, Jen?
Yes.
You're going to payment arrangement update.
Yes. Um, so, I reached out to other towns through our list server and asked them for suggestions, just because I feel like, um, the payment arrangement program totally benefits taxpayers. Um, I'm here for that, just, you know, of course, but it doesn't seem like anybody is paying their current tax bills as they come due and only making the payments on what passed due. Uh, the current arrangement that we have does state that, but I did draft, and Alicia helped me as well, a new one, which I believe is in your pockets, that just kind of really, it, it looks very official, it spelled it right out. If you don't pay your current tax bill as it comes due, that you are how to comply and speak your payment arrangement. And then that's the property I've been, um, I've been walking through and reviewing them. Obviously, it's, it's a long process. There's a lot of people that are participating, but, um, there are a lot of properties that are just, they have astronomical overdue tax bills, and it's just to the point where we...
And their payments aren't even beginning to...
Their payments, so what is happening is there's a hundred, two hundred dollar payment a month, which they're making religiously, but they're not paying their current tax bills, so it's just getting rolled and rolled and rolled, so it's that you're not going anywhere. You're just getting...
Going backwards.
So, I'm giving that a lot of attention right now. Um, so, I just wanted to, um, update you guys on that situation and show you what we've come up with. So I'm giving that a lot of attention right now, um, so I just wanted to, um, update you guys on that situation and show you what we've come up with and see if you accept it as, as reasonable for the, um, the new payment agreement form, so to speak. And, oh, I'm sorry.
And it sets the terms more very clear, um, the legal also did review this, um, so it does say, you know, that they, they're signing, they're agreeing to how much it's gonna be paid off and, we noted the RSAs in here about going into tax dealing if they don't pay, clearly stating that this is just to clear up your past due that you've never paid. And that you need to be on top of your current tax dues, your tax payment as well.
And then Alicia and I had also discussed setting a time limit, this isn't a lifelong program. Just ban post mortem, you're fine, you never get your, your property needed, so, you know, like go over with anybody who requests, um, to go into a payment arrangement, we wanna keep it to like a three to a five year program for repayment, which I think is a reasonable amount of time. You know, there are some collect art in a lot of arrears, you know, so obviously it's case by case basis. And then I'm also reviewing, um, current participants because I'm finding some of the payment amounts are just not reasonable to get anywhere. Because this is to pay it off, not to just continue on, so. And then also, um, just to update you guys, this week I've been working with Craig and Brian and Jesse. Um, when I did the lean a couple weeks ago, it changed my intention that a lot of warrants who were was being leaned and warrants who should never be leaned because it's utility, just like your electric and so on and so forth. So, um, there's about sixteen properties on my list and we sent out disconnect notices, the guys were not coming on doors yesterday and I believe they're finishing up today. I also mailed the notices, um, given them ten days to pay, obviously these are some pretty significant amounts, so obviously we'll work with them on that and give them a little extra time. But, um, yeah, I just wanted to make you guys.
So you'll give them a little extra time without interest or with?
No, so what I, what my plan is, they have ten days, cause I need the highest amount owed unbelievably is about thirty three hundred dollars. And that's going back to twenty twenty lean, so it's two thousand nineteen, have to pay a bill sometime, it's not twenty twenty four. Um, we're talking in tune of close to thirty thousand dollars in non-payment, so, um, the majority of people owe fifteen hundred dollars or more, so I'm, in the letter, the disconnect notice states that they have ten days to make payment or we will discontinue their service. Um, obviously if they come to me and they're like, hey, this is a lot of money, come up with all the months, which I get, and you know, obviously they shouldn't have paid it all along, but it is ten days at this point.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, I'm willing to accept half of the ten days and then give them twenty days more to pay off the rest.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and the girls, I've given the girls, uh, in my office, um, the authority to make that determination as well, we've had that discussion.
Mm-hmm, gotcha, yeah.
So hopefully, you know, obviously you can only do what you can do and I totally understand that, but this is just to.
Try to get a handle on it.
Get a handle on it, get it cleared up and then going forward, um, we are going to do aging, um, reports. Anything over sixty days overdue is going to get a disconnect notice going forward, so that we don't end up in this situation, so, yeah, just wanted to give that some attention there.
Down top. Any questions from anyone?
Craig, Craig, please.
Oh.
Yes, I, I have been working, Shannon, just to let you guys know, we, we have made contact with a few people in the process of, of noticing, uh, putting the notices on the doors.
Mm-hmm.
We're, um, we're finding the curb stop, making sure we can get on and paying some to a bank and so that they, you know, it's kind of, you know, we're, we're kinda serious, we're being business and.
Oh, yeah.
But people have been pretty, they've been pretty receptive of it, you know, they're just.
You haven't been shot yet.
Yeah, we know we haven't paid them, but so it's, and, and to be honest with you, I mean, like, if they have, they should, they should have come down years ago and worked out something, it's just.
It's what it is.
It is what it is.
Yeah, and we're just trying to.
Alright.
Not really wanting to do that.
And then forward and back, so.
Awesome.
That's all I got, thanks guys.
Okay, townwide phone system update.
Um, I agree with her, um, moving forward with this form, do you want time to?
Yeah.
No, if the attorneys, if the attorneys have gone over it and approve it, I don't have an issue with that. No, no.
You won't find a judge that'll uphold it, but you can write.
No, right. We can't even, we can't get a judge to hold our lease contracts, so, you know, but anyways, yeah.
And, and with the kind of the tax dealing, obviously we have the RSAs and the laws that we have to follow with the tax dealing.
Yeah.
Um, so that kind of is a process, but still. Alright, so for a few years now, we've had kind of issues with the phone system that we have, we have a, uh, I've asked staff if they can remember how long ago it was that we upgraded to the, the, um, all work system. I'm getting like two thousand sixteen, maybe even earlier than that, so the phone system that we have at town hall is very old, um. We also cannot find, we cannot buy the, um, desktop phones that we have anymore, we have to go to eBay to actually buy them, they're kind of obsolete. Um, I actually did have to go to eBay for the police department to buy them, we've taken them from this building to that building. Um, so I was approached by Verizon, Verizon services our cell phones for the town right now, um. In April, what kind of also sparked this really deep dive into our phone system is in April, we received a notice from First Light. So First Light is our carrier who covers our, um, essentially the copper lines that you have in town. Um, and they were going, they said that our bill was below average and they were increasing each of our copper lines up an additional hundred and twenty five dollars per line per month. So starting in June, had I done nothing, ignored this letter we received, we would have an increase of two thousand one hundred and twenty five dollars on top of our six hundred dollar bill already. For just the copper lines that First Light services. So those lines are our fax lines that are serviced by copper, our alarm lines that are serviced by the copper. And a few landlines, like this building, Danielle has a landline, I think the library had a few landlines. Over the last year or so, we've been upgrading the alarm system to cellular, so I think the mill is the last building that hadn't been upgraded to the cellular. And the elevator also runs off the copper line, so we have already kind of started that process anyway, um, and, um, the mill just got finished this week. And then we're looking at changing over the elevator, we also got a notice, notice from Otis that the copper lines are obsolete and that we had to go to a different option, which is either the cellular or the internet, but I think they're all cellular.
They're trying to give us a couple of different options, but it will be cellular, I'm sure.
Um, so we have been working diligently to look at all those lines, what can we get rid of, um, for the faxing? We had at town hall already migrated to internet faxing, no one's really faxing anymore and now we can just do it through our scanner fax, our scanner copier and it's internet based. Um, so we got rid of those in the last year or two when I started as TA, um, and I'm gonna transition the fire department over to a different way, a method as well and as well as the PD. Um, so also through this, we were able to look at, you know, kind of look at all of our phone lines and we found some inactive lines that we have been paying on for the last long time. Um, so those have been addressed and are being cut and done, we'll be, we'll be seeing a very large decrease in some of our phone line bills because of some li- lines that we don't need anymore. Um, we're transitioning to the cellular, the fax. So I sat down with Verizon, they can do all of our desk, um, phones, do the upgrade, they will provide, and I had to count all of the phones between this office, uh, this building, PD, fire, DPW. We have about fifty seven desk phones and I originally spoke with them. Each new phone, and I knew this was gonna be a cost, each new phone is gonna be a hundred and eighty dollars per desk phone. And they were gonna give me a fifty dollar bill credit for each line, but they came back and they said, we'll give you all the phones for free, plus we'll give you the bill credit. Um, they originally quoted me at twenty five dollars a month for each line, and I gave, you have this information too.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, for each line with a five dollar, um, yeah, twenty five each per month for each line. But then they came back when they gave me the offer of the free phones at twenty dollars a month and that's after the bill credit. They can also do the faxing for PD and fire at twenty five dollars a month. I did reach out to Toshiba, cause Toshiba is the one who I go through for my faxing and the quote for Toshiba for the police department was one seventy a month and the fire was ninety dollars a month. So I said, thank you, but no thank you, if we, if I get the Lord's blessing to move to Verizon, we, we're gonna go through them because that's only twenty five dollars a month versus your one seventy and your ninety. Um.
What is, what is the auto receptionist, what is that?
So the auto receptionist is when you call town hall and you get Colleen's lovely voice.
Yes.
Considered the auto receptionist and then you charge for that.
Okay, alright. Alright.
Um, so we only have two, I have one at town hall and I believe the fire department has an auto receptionist. If you call the police department, you just get dispatch, correct? The other bonus to switching with Verizon is right now we pay, um, we do have PhD who is our customer service for all the phone lines. Currently anytime I call them up, it's a minimum thirty dollar charge for half a, half, even if it's a five second call. So customer service, customer service through Verizon will be free, there will be no, no charges for anything that we have to call them to do. They're all internet based too, so you just either email them or call them and they can fix whatever they have to do through the portal. And they have a really user friendly system where your admins can log into the portal and use as well. We don't have a huge customer service bill to them, but it's a few hundred dollars a year, so I mean, it's, it's savings for enough of that there. Another thing that I liked about the phones, not only that will they be brand new and not old in age, is that they have an alert option. So let's just say the roads in the front are the first kind of point of contact, God forbid this ever happened, if there was an accident shooter or something bad happening, they can push a button that alerts everyone in the building and they could say, you know, close your doors, or we have an emergency, or there's a tornado running through town, like hunk, hunker down. And so every department or every building has that capability to have that alert messaging to all of the phones.
And even if it comes from the town hall, it alerts the others?
I think it's, I think it's.
Individual building.
Specific, specific.
Good, yeah, yeah.
Um, you know, especially where the PD is three floors, three floors, two, oh, you have three, two, two floors, so that would be a, a good thing for them to have. Um, this will help with having one bill, one provider, we currently have four providers, we have First Light, INET, Consolidated.
Verizon.
Verizon, so this will consolidate this.
Make it easier, we'll keep it a lot of, yes, yeah.
Yes.
A lot.
And this doesn't affect, Deb, this doesn't affect, um, this is just phones, this has nothing to do with your dispatching or anything like.
Yeah, I assume phone numbers will stay the same.
Uh, yeah, that was gonna be my next question.
Still the same, our extensions will still stay the same, uh, they'll do all that merge over if we want to, um. When I broke down what we're currently paying between First Light, INET, Consolidated, we're about eighteen hundred dollars a month, my new bill will be about twelve hundred dollars a month. Um, and this will also, this also is due to the fact that we're getting rid of lines we've been paying for that we shouldn't have been paying for. Getting rid of the faxing and the copper lines that are aging out anyway.
Mm-hmm.
So this is gonna be huge savings to the town, um, in the long run.
It's gonna be a huge savings in the short run too.
And for, I mean, just in what we were able to clean up, um, you know, six hundred bucks a month, seven thousand dollars right there, right off of that, um, would just, I'm gonna have to pay that one twenty five to First Light for probably June, maybe July. Because, um, of the way that, A, I have to get your blessing to move forward and by the time they do the merge, I may be stuck with one or two bills, um, for First Light. And I can't cut the copper lines to the alarm lines and the faxing for them until this is put into place first.
Alright.
Oh, what else can I add?
Any questions?
I need.
Good work.
No, sounds like a lot of time had to go into finding all these nice.
That's kind of what warrants and stuff, but yeah, it was, I mean, and I could have gone out and did three or four more quotes, but I don't know that I would get such a good deal on the free phones that they offered me. Um, even at the, when they first came at me at the one eighty with a fifty dollar bill credit, and that wasn't that bad to have to replace all the phones, but A, they're really close to two for free to get us as a customer. And then they knocked down five dollars a month per line.
How much are they getting for the old phones on eBay?
I'm just gonna pretend we have them there.
Oh, I think we have seven of them, I mean, maybe.
And for all.
People do that.
Maybe we could have an employee left.
And we're also increasing, um, at the PD, almost ten extra phones, because when they had built the PD, they kept the qu- the prices minimum, they kept the phones that we had, because you couldn't get any extra phones. So when we looked at adding the new, you know, I asked Chief, I said, you still need these extra nine or ten phones, he said, yes we do. And so I'm taking into account that I'm even adding more lines to my bill, but I'm still gonna be under that.
For less money, yeah. And this is for every phone?
This is for.
Highway, police, and fire.
Highway, police, DPW, fire, the library, um, chose not to participate for whatever reason, um, they, they went, who were they going for, the alarm system?
Uh, they had their own several, I'm not sure of the name, I saw a note there the other day.
They are going, they're changing their alarm system from the copper to the cellular, I guess I did convince them to do that because of the cost, um.
Capital alarm or something like that.
Yeah, it was fun, and they're gonna go to, through Breeze Line for their telephone versus Verizon.
Really one of the only bills that we pay on a monthly basis for the library, so.
I would have thought they wanted to hop on the.
Well, we're paying the bill, shouldn't we have control?
Yeah, I was just.
We pay it on their behalf.
We pay it on their behalf, yeah.
Their behalf, instead of them cutting the check.
They need a.
We're seeing, I can ask for the warranties.
Are they all seen on table?
Yes, um, and you might need the extension, but they're all gonna be the exact same phone as a T fifty four W and then they do have the extension, extension pack for the dispatchers. Yeah, so I don't see that there would be a disruption, um, in our service or anything that we do now that we wouldn't have with them. And, you know, I think all the department heads are on board, we thoroughly discussed the faxing options and think that will still work. The alarm systems being transitioned over to cellular is obviously the, the natural path of that and.
I don't have a clue.
Oh, and the other thing I wanna add, there is also an option, which it will totally be up to the department heads, but they have an app for cell phones for those that do need access to their voicemail when they're away.
Yeah.
So you, uh, an employee could, uh, download the app on their phone, all the phones, all the calls that come to your desk phone can be routed to your cellphone. You're on vacation, you can just turn the app off so you get, you're not getting those calls. Um, yeah, so that will be one hundred percent, you know, on the department heads, if they wanna allow the employees that ability to get their phone calls on the cellphone.
That's not working for the corner of cell phone line.
Alicia on that, like for instance, if I get a voicemail, it goes to my email, so that'll be, it'll still be, it could be still the same.
We can still do that. You can do the email, you can do the app.
Okay.
And I think the app is more, it just boards it to your, your, whatever cellphone you download the app to.
Yeah, I mean, I get my emails, my work phone all the time, so if I get a voicemail at work, how should I get email?
Yeah, yeah, and then.
So that will stay the same, cause then I'm the same.
Yeah, yeah.
Or they, that's compatible?
I don't know. I can ask.
And that would have to, if, from, from our aspect, it would have to do both the radio and the phone.
Oh, I assume so. You only need a headset for dispatch, right?
Dispatch, yeah.
Okay. So.
So with the app, it won't go to our email?
No, it will, I said.
It will, so do both.
Yes.
So what's the sense of adding the app that's going to our email?
There isn't.
Okay.
Well, not everyone has email on their cell phones, so they're.
Why would they do?
Fire may not, fire may not have access to their cell phones, which they probably, but they may still on their phone too.
Does anyone here have a problem with that decision?
Nope.
Nope, alright, I guess that's a move forward. Okay, um, any other new? Okay, um, any other new, uh, any other business, new business?
New business, yes, I would like, um, Steve to introduce, uh, Crystal. Crystal's our new finance HR clerk, she started last week?
Yeah, I mentioned.
Yes.
We just wanna introduce you to her, and so she can see all your faces at once.
I know a few, Miller, Crystal Jacobs, the new finance clerk, she started last Wednesday, it's been pretty good so far, so.
She still has a smile on her face.
I know.
Still here, still here.
Still here.
We'll, we'll get rid of that soon enough, you know?
Yeah, it's great so far.
Great. Good, good.
Any questions, Miller?
No, we, yeah, we talked the other day.
It's just exciting, start, we're excited.
Welcome, welcome, we appreciate it, that's for sure, Steve needs all the help he can get.
Steve Fleming, we do, I have a handicap.
No, we appreciate it, that's for sure.
Just to add the names to the phase, we have Sharon Champion, Sunny, it's quad, but we all call him Sunny, Sunny Patton, Sharon Rick Mooney, uh, John Pike, and then Charles O'Hara.
We'll give, we'll give Alicia a clap, she got a name.
Thank you guys.
Thanks, Sue, welcome.
Thank you.
So, coming off the heels of a positive now, I have five news, we do have, we did receive a resignation this week from our lay news clerk, John Thomas. Um, she will be moving on to a different position, uh, with her, not in this town, but at a different job. So we sadly regret that she will be leaving us, so we have put out the ad to replace her position. Um, I think it is running, what, this weekend and next week?
It's starting this weekend, and then it's also on the national, and actually, I'm gonna look into it, I heard a radio out this morning, forever, it's, I think it's work in the Hampshire, it's a pretty, another free online job tool.
Alright.
And then on our website, so, anyone else, anyone looking, at work, we have a lay news clerk position available.
Any other new?
So I do have a new one, I didn't have it on the agenda, so I was supposed to have a franchise, a Breeze Line franchise meeting today, but we have canceled it because there's really no new, um, business with the Breeze Line franchise agreement.
This is just continuing, yeah.
It has been continuing, they have not met our, they have not met the terms of the franchise agreement, uh, and we are in the midst of renewing our contract. So one of the things that I'm supposed to ask you guys, so, if you guys remember, Breeze Line is over on
Yeah.
One oh six, so at, during COVID, they had cut, um, they had stopped service to their customer service center, and they have since moved that customer service center, which is the new franchise agreement, that they have a, um, centrally located or, um, customer service center. So they moved it to Rochester, and they feel that Rochester is the Lakes Region's central location, which we all, part of the consortium disagree with that.
Yeah.
We say that is not central to the Lakes Region.
It's not even part of the Lakes Region, it's not even part of the Lakes Region.
So
When you're talking to somebody in Pennsylvania, they think it is.
So they, so we have fought back and said, no, we want the Belmont office open that is central to Franklin and Hilton and Laconia and Guilford and Belmont, and everyone who is in this a- agreement. So they have since opened up a store in Concord. So I need to get a consensus from the board, are you okay with the Concord office and, versus the Belmont office? Or do you feel we should hold firm to the agreement that the Belmont customer service center be the central location for?
Where in Concord, do you know?
I do not know.
I don't even care, I'm north in Concord.
Huh?
I don't care if I'm north in Concord.
No, 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 I just wondered.
It's down on Main Street, though, right, right in the center, I'm pretty sure.
Back to the agreement, that when they bought out Verizon and became Breeze Line.
Metropolis, right.
They signed an agreement with us and told us that that agreement was gonna stand, and that's a way we should stand on. Right, that agreement, when they took over the franchise or bought them out, they were gonna stay here, that was, that was an agreement. Now, with, and I don't recall that being time-sensitive, I don't believe it was, so as far as I'm concerned, it stays here.
Yeah, I agree with John, I want, I think, it's at least in the Lakes Region still, Concord's not a Lakes Region.
So the consensus of the consortium is to keep it in Belmont as well. So the other board of selectmen and the other towns have also said, no, we, we want you to stick to your agreement and keep the customer service building in Belmont.
As you agreed when you took over Verizon or AT&T, whichever one they bought out when they took this franchise area over.
And I believe when we entered into a franchise agreement with Comcast, um, which mirrors the Breeze Line agreement, their customer service is in Guilford, so.
That's, that's close, that's
It's in the Lakes Region.
It's in the Lakes Region, exactly, Rochester is not.
No.
That is way too far, so if, um, anyone would like a motion to, uh, I don't see this.
I make a motion that the, um, what is it, it's not, no, it's not
Customer Service Center, Breeze Line, per the franchise agreement, be in Belmont.
Customer Service Center, yeah. Yes, in the existing facility.
Be in the Lakes Region.
So moved or second, whatever it is.
Alright, and all in favor?
Hi.
Hi, anyone oppose?
My also thing on my comment to do list is, we do pay quite a bit for internet service to Breeze Line for the town, and I wanna look and ask, um, what would it give us, our, cause we're, the franchise, if I can look at going to Comcast. Comcast is a heck of a lot cheaper right now for internet versus Breeze Line, and I, I mean, I could say
And, and didn't they run the lines so that our town, um, buildings could be, was that the one that they ran the lines, so our town buildings could be connected if we chose?
Oh, yeah, I know, yeah, when I spoke to them, they said Belmont is almost built out, if anyone has any questions about Comcast is in their area, so I called the customer service, and they'll say yes or no.
Oh, they come knocking at your door.
They're the ones that are working down on forty, doing all that stuff, and they've been on.
Yeah.
Yeah, they've been, they came, they, they went up South Road, they come
Well, we might wanna check, says, wasn't it a few years ago, when we, we entered this agreement, that there was a special line?
Line, that's
That needed to be done from the, from either the fire department to town hall?
That was the fiber.
Fi- fiber optic, maybe that's what I was thinking of.
And that never went anywhere, I don't know what happened with that.
Oh, it didn't?
Okay.
Alright, that, that's, I think that's what I was thinking of.
Yeah, we were supposed to do fiber from basically Fire PD, Town Hall, library, and I don't know why that fell through.
Alright, probably, I don't know.
Breeze Line, everything falls through.
And I just have, nothing for new business.
Okay, so then we go on to old business and budget update, so this is our percentage as to where we're
Yeah, yeah, this is where we are at budget-wise, so currently we should be at forty-two percent spent of the budget, and we are at thirty-eight percent. We're still trending under.
Yeah, good.
Some of those numbers, you know, like, if you were to look at individual, like, for the beach and parking rack, like, she's only at two percent spent, but that's because she hasn't even started her park and rec program, so
Started that summer program, yeah, yeah.
Come June, July, she'll, she'll bump right up to probably actual
Yeah.
But I, I have to say, our department heads, when I look at the numbers, cause I plug in them by hand, what's being spent, and they're really not spending anything right now, they're really trying to hold their budgets and keep all their spending to the last minute.
Well, we, we appreciate it.
They're really, really pushing up.
Awesome.
Is there any accounts trending that you worried about, or is there any accounts that are trending bad?
No. There's a few that are over that I think might be over anyways, and, um, I don't think there's anything we can do about some of those lines, so I think they'll shake out towards the end of, um, for final budgets.
They're not over at the point that we have to get nervous about.
Right.
Okay, alright, um, any other old business?
Uh, just to turn to you, is the one thirty Depot Street, the Walker property.
Mm-hmm.
Um, town planner Karen and our code enforcement officer Glenn went out to the Walker property.
We'll take one more picture to round that in one week.
And, um, inventory, per, um, Legal's advice, kind of what they could see of the property, uh, and count what they could, you know, easily count in there. So now it's, so we have this, and we also have a picture, so the, the number correlates to a picture, that is what is in that picture. So now it's kind of, what do we want to do now?
So he allowed you on, you gave him notification, he allowed you on to do this?
Yeah.
Has he received a copy of this? Probably not, doesn't
He has not, he was there, he knew we were taking the inventory, taking everything down, we certainly can provide, and we'll have the
Yeah. I'm just, I just wondered, so
Things that were covered with tires, we obviously did not open, we, you know, if we noticed tires, we just gave an estimated number, you know, it, it, we could count that we did, and if we couldn't, then, you know, we weren't, you know, we, for example, there were five blue barrel, we didn't open the barrels to see the contents, it's five blue barrels, you know, that type of thing. So you'll, you'll go through the cars that did have registrations and had an expiration sticker, we noted what the registration was and the date of expiration, most of those are behind the house, um, and as you obviously, you get farther into the woods, it's
A mess, mm, okay, so now what do we do? List.
Has Legal given you any feedback on what we can and can't do from here?
No, and it's really, I mean, their suggestion was you really wanna see what this is gonna cost you, you wanna have someone come in and see how much is it gonna be to take, you know, the metal, the trash, the this, this and that, and then you guys need to make a decision. So if this number looks at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, do you wanna tackle that this year, do you not wanna tackle it this year? Uh, me and Karen were kinda talking, maybe we have someone who will take this stuff, who are, who is not willing to take it, but willing to pay us for some of these vehicles.
They won't take the junk cars unless all the oil's drained out of them.
Well, I know, just, and it was this conversation we'd have to follow, when we had done a junkyard inspection, the individual there mentioned he would be interested in potentially purchasing some of the vehicles. You know, that would be something to
But then we get into a liability situation, of what's he gonna do with the oil that's in those cars that we, he got
Well, he would have to go into the junkyard, just like
Gilbert's Junkyard, down the street from my house, they just, in the spring, they crush cars, they take a lot of the wrecks that, uh, Rusty's stores wrecks there. But they have an out, they have a lift system, they drain the antifreeze, they drain, they keep everything environmentally clean, because the people crushing it don't want the oil in those cars. So these things have been laying on the ground, but most of them have got flat tires, they've been there for fifteen or twenty years, out in that back field with the trees growing through them.
There are a handful there that would potentially be, the ones that expired twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, that have registration stickers on those, because there are still, you know, there's not a lot, but there are some, in the back, there's probably eight or ten that were, you
And then if we get through the mess that's on the ground, what's on the ground, what's really, you pick the car up, what's the oil squats on the ground, what do we do with that? And I, and I'm, I'm agreeing with cleaning up the property, that's the, that, the property's got city water, city sewer, he's, he's laughed at us now for five, six years, and I can hear the laughter, and I don't like it, so.
Yeah, and like I said, we did go out, um, as, as farther back you get, obviously, the more difficult it is going to be to remove.
Oh, yeah, so he's gotta woodcut trees to get, they're, they're in the middle of the car.
Yeah, there's, the farther back you get, there are some of the piles of tires, obviously, that are starting to, to get where they're almost below ground, they, mother matriors, every, you know, every season. Uh, I did look briefly online this morning about, uh, some of the tire recycling companies, um, what services they offer, you know, versus what can you do to load the trailers, that type of thing. So I'll reach out to a few of them and just get a ballpark number, so at least we have something to, to look at, instead of just kind of guessing what, what it would cost, because there are piles of tires out there that are in the hundreds, and then you've got ten or twelve stacked up, you've got, so they're, they're everywhere.
And he's grown.
Yes.
He's putting more there every week.
So what happens to, let's just say, we find some guy that wants to buy fifty tires, and I assume a town employee meets them there and whatever, and takes these fifty tires, and then this guy comes out and says, those are my tires off my car, you can't have them, or you took them away, or whatever, I mean, how do we, I'm just, you know, scenario, I guess, I don't know legally what happens, I don't know. Is everything on the ground, is our responsibility?
You say it sounds like that in the court, but anything outside is our responsibility.
Well, it does, but We all know, yeah.
Everything outside, and I have one of the questions, Sue, do you remember when he brought the RV out there, and he was fixing the roof?
Oh, the true, oh, yeah, yeah.
And I said, well, can we deliver back to whoever it is, and, and she has said, it is full of junk, he, I don't think he ever anticipated it being a, a project, but
No, 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 he didn't, of course not. Yeah. Yeah, hmm, and I assume probably if there's cars out there that have expired license plate, there's gotta be a title somewhere.
Maybe, maybe.
That doesn't mean anything.
Okay, that is official, babe.
I know, without the title, yeah, alright, so you're gonna do a little bit more research?
I'll start to do a little more research, see about some numbers, what the options are, and there's obviously a lot of junk haulers in the area. Again, there's, for example, there's three lawn tractors out there, they're, you know, do you claim one is still visible, but, you know, you can't say one's for parts because they're completely different machines, so it's, you know, do you say you can keep one, and we're gonna take the other three, or, you know, that type of thing.
Yeah.
And looking at that, but there's other stuff that's simply just trash, that, tabletop, that's all dilating and disintegrating, it's not, you know, it's not, it's like it's junk, it needs to go and roll off, and, and off it goes.
It's junk.
And again, some of the smaller personal metal, how much time do you be accepting it, because again, more time, more money, as far as
Probably gonna have to hire someone to, you know, either you, whether you hired a scrapper to come get things, or if you hi, or if you got a truck and hired someone to build a truck, and then we take the truck down and do the scrap, like, oh, what else do you consider?
Yeah.
How much time and effort, and what route you wanna go to all this?
Yeah, we don't need that to end up on Mile Hill or South Road or somewhere where we seem to be heading.
You get the truck, you're gonna roll off, you know, who are you gonna hire to, to throw the trash in with the, the roll off?
Yep, yep.
It's next weekend, John?
Alright, um, we'll wait to hear from you.
Yeah, I'll get some numbers together, said there's, there's a few different approaches, and just to jump right to somebody to come get the tires and, and see.
Can I give a call to hiding metals in, uh, Northwood?
Okay, I'll call that.
And, and ask them both also about the, the iron that's there, the, the vehicles and the tires.
Yeah.
Believe it or not
There's a company that comes in every year, the Highway Garage, and they pull up, they load the tires, you pay them per tire, and they handle all the labor they work, so.
That was the other
There's a lot of those tires
I think it's called BDS.
Uh, that was one of the ones, I was gonna ask you, that was one of the companies, there was BDS and there was another company, yeah, out of Maine.
There's another company, yeah. Yeah. I think we used the one, we used them both, I believe, I mean, it's, three dollars a tire, but, but the problem is when you get the big tires, the truck tires, so like, a couple of the loader tires, if you're trying to, they wanted like four, five hundred bucks to tear up the shell.
Really? Wow.
So I'm looking for a playground, anybody needs a tire, I just, I wouldn't pay that, I don't, I don't
Arts and crafts, chicken coop, you know, wow, wow, wow.
Yeah.
Yep.
Wow, alright, okay, um, do we have any other old business?
No old business, but I do have a small non-public.
Non-public, um, anyone from the public, any questions? No, okay, our next meeting is June nineteenth, right here, we're going to, could I have a motion to go into non-public?
So moved.
Second?
Check it.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, anyone oppose?